Okay, good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for January 21st, 2015. The first item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes for December 11th.
Move approval of meeting minutes for December 11th, 2014.
Second.
Any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Future meeting dates? We had proposed dates of February 3rd, 17th, and 24th. Will those work for everyone? I don't know if those were emailed out or not, maybe not.
Third is a Tu-.
Tuesdays. The first, 3rd, and 4th Tuesday of February.
Yeah, it should work.
Yeah, I'm available.
Okay, so we'll schedule those. Payroll and vendor warrants.
Move approval of current payroll and vendor warrants?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone here tonight who wanted to address the Board at Citizen Speak? Okay, then seeing none, we'll go on with our agenda. We're going to take one item out of order, which is number eight. Our town treasurer, Jim McCullough, is here tonight, and this is regarding refinancing of the school bonds, and I'm going to be recused on this, so I will step out of the room and let me know when I can come back.
Okay. Okay, we had a 10-year call on a final school bond. There was $4,825,000 left on the bond. The coupon rate on the bond before the refi was 5%. We had 10 bids on it on January 15th. The best bid came in at a true interest cost of 1.428868. And that is from FTN Financial Capital Markets. It's going to reduce our interest rate to a coupon rate of 2%. We got a received a bond premium of $140,329.75. So the net interest cost the next 10 years is $377,452, which gives you a true interest cost of 1.428868. And that will save us $1,084,000 over the last 10 years, which goes directly back to the taxpayers.
Right. Yeah, so everybody understands these were all non-exempt debt, so the it's in essence an override for.
It's an underwrite now.
It's an under- well, not quite an underwrite, but yeah, it's refunding anyways, yeah. So there will be a reduction in the tax rate in essence because of that.
Right now, there's only one bond left out there for this library, and we can recall that in '17 if the rates still-.
Still up, yeah.
If it's still working. This will certainly work doing.
So Jim, in layman's terms, I know you're the finance guys, but this means that we refinanced existing debt on the schools?
Yeah. Yeah, it was a 20-year bond. After 10 years, it was callable, which is basically you have a chance to refi at that point. We did one last year, we saved 1.3 million. This year, it saves $1,084,000. So we've saved about 2.5 million.
So are we locked in 2% now for the next 10 years?
2% for the next 10 years.
No matter what happens to the interest rate?
That's in stone.
And can you refinance it again, we'll say, in five years?
No, that is it. You can only do a recall once on a bond.
But I doubt you're going to get a lower interest rate than 2% anyways.
But if you did, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, they're only callable at certain key dates. Depends on the bond issue.
They said you want to save at least 3% on it, and this saves 13% over the life of the entire bond.
And it's going to save over $1,000,000 in the next 10 years?
Yeah, $1,084,000.
That's great. And how much was the issuance cost, do you know?
The issuance cost, we don't have them in yet, but we got standing pause was 8,200. I haven't got the bond council's bill yet, but it's going to be well within the $140,000.
Yeah, okay. Great, fantastic.
Good job.
Do you have a motion before us?
Let me read the motion, Tom.
Sure.
I'll make a motion that in order to reduce interest costs, treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund the town's $10 million general obligation school bonds dated March 1st, 2005, maturing on March 1st in the years 2016 through 2025 inclusive, in the aggregate principal amount of $5 million to refunded bonds, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal. Review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds. Each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second.
All in.
Aye.
Aye.
Well, good.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks. Let's move on to tomorrow. Thanks, Paul.
Okay.
Want to do calling, or do you want to do the sign review committee? Sign review going to be a long one?
Yeah, we have others coming for calling.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is a meeting with our sign review committee. I think we have two members here tonight. And Bill Clark, so Bill, if you'd like to join us at the table as well. Welcome, John and Larry.
Thank you.
And Bill. Maybe you could both introduce yourselves. I know your meetings aren't televised like ours are, so just for the benefit of the public who are watching.
I'm Larry Johnson, Senator V Committee Member, I'm also town meeting member.
John Zickwitz, Sign Committee Member.
Thank you, John, and thank you both for joining us tonight.
Sure.
What we wanted to do was have a meeting between our board, which is the appointing authority for the sign review committee, and your committee to talk a little bit about what the process is, what design guidelines we have, how we go about reviewing sign applications, because there have been some questions in particular about some, the sleepy sign generated a lot of discussion, some other LED signs have generated some questions and comments, and we thought it would be helpful to talk about those types of signs in general, and also maybe about the process and how we might together work better, because often if there's a often a decision is made by your board and then it comes to our board, so there may be ways that we can help you or better work with you and ways that we might have suggestions for what might be helpful for our review. So that's really what the purpose of tonight's meeting is.
Okay.
We appreciate your joining us.
Sure. You want me to take you through the process?
I think that'd be great.
Is that the way to start?
Yeah, I think so. That'd be wonderful.
Well, someone will have the need for a sign in the town, and they fill out.
Fill out an application.
They fill out an application. I thought I had it.
And Bill is the bridge between the two boards.
Oh, here it is. They fill out an application, submit it to the building department, and.
Submit it to me.
Oh, to you? Okay. So you submit it to Bill, and then based on size, sizes, it either gets approved as submitted or rejected per the bylaws. There's a certain amount of, there's a multiplication you have to do to figure out the amount of signage for storefront.
Yeah.
Typically, because it's such a small area, I'd say, what, 80% get rejected, 90% get rejected?
I don't know which percentage, I mean.
Yeah, it's hard to say, but so they typically do not meet this requirement, and then they get asked to submit a package of information that then comes to the sign committee. That package of information is based on the design guidelines that were put together in 2000, I want to say '04 for some reason.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we use to guide people in the sign design. There's different components to it, how to locate, where to locate the sign on the building, if there's a sign band, just how to work with the building, type of information that we like to see on a sign, type of information that usually not allowed on the sign. It talks about lighting, it talks about materials, it has the town bylaws at the rear of it if they need to see that, and then there's a checklist of things that the committee needs to receive to then review the design, four copies of an elevation drawing, material specifications, if there's a cross-section that shows how it's hung on the building, just different information. So Bill will get that information from whoever's submitting, and then we meet and review it at our meeting along with whoever's submitting the sign. A good part of the time, not everything is submitted, so we'll meet, go through what's been submitted, what still needs to be submitted. If we have any questions, we'll review it with whoever's submitting the sign. If we have some early suggestions, we'll make that, those comments, and then set up another meeting when we have the, all the information. And then we base our recommendations on that and send them on to you.
So I just have one question, Bill, and John, and Larry. So the building department will usually reject it, you're saying about 80% of the.
No, no, no. I didn't understand John's question when he was asking it.
Yeah.
The application comes in, and it's usually 80 to 90% of the applications that come in, this is the sign I want, and they try to give you everything right then.
Yeah.
That's what John's talking about. That's the stuff that gets rejected. It's like, no, that's not quite how we do it. We go back, and I usually take and walk step by step through the design book. This is what we look for, this is what we allow, so there is a process that, there is a discussion that takes place usually with me. The sign checklist, if they had taken the time to go through it first, usually addresses most of the issues that say no. But people come in and they say, this is the sign I want, this is the one that, this is the one I feel the best.
I get it. So you get rejected because you don't have a complete package?
Yes.
Okay. Not because you don't meet the bylaws?
No, it's usually because you don't have a complete package.
Okay.
And it doesn't meet what we have for design guidelines in the book.
See, I understood that they got rejected because they didn't meet the bylaws, and then you were some sort of an appeals board.
No.
Where you would overrule the.
Actually, we're kind of the appeals board.
Understood. So that's where I was confused, but I get it.
If anything, this is one of those committees that people come in with their application, they come in with their proposal, and they will actually work with you as the business owner for a sign. You'll make your proposal, this is what I want, and they may change, help you change it right then and there. They like it, they like it, and they'll let you go. If they don't, and they start seeing things that, well, you could, and they start helping you redesign certain pieces that may be more beneficial to what we're looking for, and it may be more beneficial to the sign that they actually want for their building. Case in point, the lighting issues. We like gooseneck lights over our lights. We don't like lit letters. And because of it, we'll go through and we'll work the process and say, this is what you could have. And it's up to the individual, but they usually see the light and say, you know, this is probably a better sign. Almost every one of those signs that's out there has been reworked somehow by the makeup of the committee. They're, it's a very easy group to work with. They're here to help, they're not here to pass judgment and say, no, you can't have that sign. It's like, we're going to get you to a sign, let's work through the process.
But then the only time we'll see a sign request is when it's a non-conforming with a recommendation. We don't see every sign request, correct?
If it's in the business district, you don't have to see every sign.
Right.
If it's a sign that is lit, you see every one of them.
Right, because that's outside the zoning.
Yes. If it's in a residential district, it's not conforming, you see it, because that's what the bylaw says.
Right. But if it conforms to the zoning, then.
If it's in the business district, it only has to go to the building commission.
It goes straight up to the building department and gets approved?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Now, let me ask you something. Obviously, part of the reason of being here outside of getting an understanding of the process is we do have a citizen's petition to have a moratorium on LED and neon. I mean, I think neon is banned every place, as far as I know, but LED. Now, the, I guess my concern is, there's all kinds of different LED, and this thing doesn't specify. Are some of these gooseneck lamps now, LED lit lamps?
Well, everything nowadays is LED. People don't build anything anymore with incandescent lights or fluorescent.
Right, because of cost and everything else.
LED is state-of-the-art, and it's the light source. It's not, it's how you illuminate the sign, it's not.
Right.
The sign. So you could have a gooseneck light with an LED bulb in it.
Yep.
Because they stay brighter, they don't, an incandescent bulb, you'll get hot spots, it'll cool down, the light level varies. LEDs, it stays consistent, it doesn't use as much energy to produce the same amount of light, and it lasts.
Forever.
Forever. So every, so it's a very sustainable light bulb. Everyone's switching to them. I'm a healthcare architect. Hospitals are getting, all the power companies are giving hospitals rebates because they use so much energy, that they're giving them rebates to replace all their fluorescent bulbs with LEDs, all their two-by-four lights, two-by-two lights. They're all switching over to LEDs, and at some point in the future, we won't be able to buy an incandescent bulb or fluorescent bulb anymore. So that's, that's how things are lit nowadays are with LED. So I, I'm not sure the moratorium on LED, I could see a moratorium on lighted signs and how you, how that gets reviewed and produced, but I can't see a moratorium on a bulb.
It seems like the spirit of this is for backlit, maybe backlit.
I think the real spirit is the billboard kinds of, the sleepy's kind of sign.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Where I think is what it's trying to get at, but I think the way it's written seems to be much far, far more reaching, whether intentional or not.
Every one of the halls in this building are lit by LED lights.
So we scheduled this meeting before the citizen petition came in, because mainly we wanted to talk about some of the controversies we've had in the past. So just putting that aside for a minute, the citizen petition, could you talk a little bit about, maybe use a couple of specific examples, like the Ketch's Log Group sign, I saw that on my way home.
Oh, is it up? I haven't seen it yet.
It's up, it's lit, but it's, you know, it's not, I was expecting it to be a lot bigger, and it's not.
Right.
Yeah, it fits on the, it's very proportional to the building, it's not a large sign.
And that's, that's, I think halo lighting?
That's halo lighting.
Maybe you could explain how you went through that process, because you had them change.
Yes.
The initial design, which was to light the letters themselves.
They submitted a sign where it was going to be a box with internally lit letters, where each letter was going to be white, and the entire letter was going to be lit from behind. We asked them not to do that, we asked to use a halo light, so that, similar to what's on Extra Space Storage, where the, you have individual letters, and then the light is just kind of haloed behind it. So it gives a really soft light, it doesn't project into the neighborhood, just gives a soft glow, but still illuminates the sign, so you can still read it. But it's not really bright, like if they did individually backlit letters, they'll be very stark and white across that building, and the halo effect kind of softens that.
So this is just light behind the sign, but not.
Light behind the sign, correct.
Yeah.
And that's what we asked them to do, and they agreed to do it.
Now, is there a trend towards that, or is that an outlier?
No, it, I don't know if there's a trend towards it, it's just, we just feel it's a nice way to light signs like that. If they, if they want to have something on a building, it's just a nice way to light it. If they don't want to use goosenecks, which we like to use, that's just another nice soft way of lighting a sign without making it real, real bright and kind of in your face. It keeps the lighting down, it doesn't project into the neighborhood. It's just a nicer method of doing it.
Milton Hospital has one in the front entrance.
Yeah.
Yeah, Milton Hospital has that too, correct. It's just a nice way to light a big sign.
And again, those could be LED also, probably.
Oh, they are LED, yes, they are LED. That's, I mean, the light, the bulb itself is not, I don't think is the issue, it's how the signs get lit.
Right. Now, the other thing that tends to be controversial, or has been, is newer gas station signs are now the clearly LED backlit.
Correct.
And driving around, I mean, it seems every new gas station is that way. You go to Canton, I mean, if at Canton in the residential district, there's a, what do you call it, hospital that's on.
House Hospital.
Randolph Street. Great, big, huge LED backlit sign. Yeah, so it seems like there's many more of them around, but in terms of gas station technology, if a new gas, and I don't know that a new gas station will go up, but if one gets remodeled, is there any way that they can get the old type of sign still, or has technology changed?
Technology's changed so much, but what we've asked them to do, Milton Gas does it, I think, is it Sunoco?
Shell.
Shell. What we've asked them to do instead of, and they've done it so far, is, you know, you have the big box at the top, and it'll have the sign, and the whole box is lit up. What we've asked them to do is make the box opaque and just the letters light up. So if you go by Milton Gas, it's on a big blue sign, the blue doesn't have lights on it, just where the Milton gas is, that's the only part where the light comes through. So we're at least taking away from the big box being illuminated to just the letters being illuminated.
Duncan Donuts.
Milton Gas is the one that's right near the fruit center.
That way.
Okay.
Milton Gas is the one right near the fruit center, or is that the one further down on Wood?
Milton Fuel is the one in front of the fruit center. Milton Gas is the one on Wood.
Okay, okay.
So they've, so far, whenever we've gotten a gas station sign, they've all agreed to do that.
Okay.
The numbers themselves are still an LED board where they put the prices up, because that they just control from inside and, you know, computerized, they put up the signs.
That's the one I meant, yeah.
Instead of the old days where they put, you know, they put up the two, they put up the.
So I guess that's my concern.
One, they put up the.
That's my concern is going forward, those signs that are, you know, not affixed to the building, or, but the sign that's freestanding, for the most part, the technology now is those LED backlits.
But, you know, it's a matter of, do we allow them in the town?
Right.
I mean, right, right, I mean, in our.
If we don't allow them in the town, then what's their alternative, I guess?
John, would that be considered an?
I guess they could put something lower, smaller, not so high in the sky.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be considered an interior lit line, like the wood?
Yes, it is.
It is, even though it's a backdrop?
Well, it's interior lit, but we're, but because we're trying to just have it lit like the letters. So we, unfortunately, we can't get, we're not, well, at least the committee's not allowed to say, take down the pylon sign, so we're at least trying to make it better.
Right.
So we at least, if they opaque out the majority of the sign and just have the light shine through the letters, it's a lot, it's a lot less distracting than if you have the whole box, entire locks lit up.
You can't see through the white.
Oh, is it the reverse, is it white and blue?
Say that again, Bill.
The letters are blue. You'll see Milton in blue letters.
Yeah.
It's on a white sign, but you, the white is opaque, so the light's not coming through it, but it's coming through on Milton.
On the blue letters. Whereas the old style, the whole box was lit up.
Yeah, okay.
The whole entire box was lit up. Now, we're just having them cut out so just the letters light up.
So it's a trendier look.
It's like the shell.
I don't know if it's trendier, we're just trying to make.
No, I understand, yeah, yeah.
We're just trying to bring the light level down, because in our checklist.
Exactly.
At the start of the checklist, there's, we have, we listed things that, in what we called prohibited, which are, you know, pylon signs, exposed neon sign, moving parts, sandwich boards, things like that. But we haven't gotten much traction in eliminating those things. So if, so that would be a great thing, if the bylaw could be written where some of those things would not be allowed.
Yeah.
And I think there's another, we, I think when we first did this checklist, we were working with the group, I think it was Aaron Henry at that point. What we tried to get written in is that when a business moves out of a space, or a building gets sold, the signage comes down. It doesn't get grandfathered in. Somehow now, it's getting grandfathered in, and I'm not sure why.
I like that.
Because when the building that the Duncan Donuts is in now, that was a, that bank?
Zoots.
Zoots. They had a pylon sign when Duncan Donuts came in, and we tried to get the pylon sign down, and we were told, no, it's part of the property. So if we could have taken that down, you wouldn't have that Duncan Donuts pylon sign there.
So that's something we should probably bring to the planning board's attention, because they, my understanding is they may be submitting a signed bylaw for the October town meeting. That's one of the things that they're looking at.
That'd be great.
We had one at the last October town meeting.
I guess then you run, how do you run a file, you know, of the pre-existing non-conforming?
Well, yeah, I don't, see, to me, it's different, I mean, when you build a building, and you build on the side of zoning bylaws, and then 20 years later, the zoning bylaws change, yeah, I don't think it's fair to the building if a side yard went from 10 feet to 20 feet, you're the building owner, so you gotta take 10 feet of your building down. But a sign is different. A sign's just there for the, that business that's there at the time, so, and it's usually designed per their logo, per the way, the image that they want to present to the town. So it doesn't make sense to me that they, that if they get approved for something for their sign, that whoever comes in the next building, or the next tenant comes in, gets the same sign automatically. They should come through the review process again.
The same process, yeah.
I'm wondering.
You know, same thing with the rug, when the rug company moved out, if that sign had come down, then.
It's the same owner of that building in that case, so that's, it's a different business I'm bringing in there, but it's the same owner. And that sign generated a lot of controversy, probably the most controversy in the last couple of years, which was the sleepy sign.
Absolutely.
And again, that's one that you rejected the request.
Twice.
Twice for it to be, and you rejected it on a theory that it shouldn't, you didn't want a flashing sign.
It just didn't fit the town.
Yeah.
Right.
And there was no reason for it to have a flashing billboard sign on top of their building.
Right.
And I think that was a sentiment of our board as well.
I think the way it is now, kind of.
We like the sleepy sign in the front with the goosenecks, we think that was appropriate, but we didn't, we approved that part.
Right.
We approved the sleepies with the goosenecks, but not the sign on top.
The problem really was that a prior Board of Selectmen had authorized that, so when, by the time it came to us a year and a half ago, or a year ago, it was around this time last year, it really, there really wasn't anything that we could do about it, because it was already there, and it was already flashing. I think we helped approve it by.
Getting it to not flash.
Getting it to not flash, and having one message up there, not, and only one color, not multiple colors.
Right, but see, the whole thing's one big board of LEDs, and that's, that may be what, what citizens are, they think they're looking at that as LEDs.
Probably.
Sign, which it's a, it's a message board. It's not, the LED is the bulb, so it's.
Right, right.
That's how the sign is constructed, it's not how it's illuminated.
Understand, yeah.
So I think that's a.
The bylaw that we did adopt in the fall, at least it will prohibit that going forward, because we stopped that in the business districts, but were you involved in the master planning process at all? Because one of their recommendations is for blades.
I went to a couple of meetings, yes.
Is for blade signs? Is that something that generated with your committee and then went to the master plan, or?
Nope.
For the signs.
Right. What was the recommendation?
To consider blade signs for business districts.
To consider them?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had, it was a prohibited feature on this checklist of projecting protruding signs, but we, there have been some that have been approved because they just worked for the owner, like Steel and Rye, because their frontage is on the parking lot, you can't really see it from the street, and they designed and built, proposed to do a Because their, their frontage is on the parking lot, you can't really see it from the street, and they designed and built, proposed to do a sign that, as you were coming up from both streets, you could see especially from, from the, from the, the main intersection there, from.
Central Ave.
Thank you, Central Ave, you know, you can't really see their entrance, so to have a blade sign there made sense, and it was high enough off the sidewalk where it wouldn't interfere with any vision or, or people. Sometimes in the, in the business district in East Milton, we've seen some proposal where they want them awfully low, so I, I think if there's some requirements, I think blade signs can look really attractive, I've seen them, there are a lot, like Concord uses them a lot. I think Hingham has some, and they, they can be a very attractive sign, and it's easier to see the business when you're coming down the sidewalk.
Right.
If there's a blade sign there, so.
And that's a perfect example of a tastefully designed sign on the, you know, that suits the building as well.
Yeah, that, that worked, it just fit the building, they were building it themselves, and it just, it fit the whole design, so.
Right. Thomas Stentle has one on Adams Street, it's one of the few that we have allowed in certain areas, there's another one.
The attorney's office, is it attorney?
Insurance, up on the second floor, where Fallon was.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
McIntyre.
So, is there any need to amend our design bylaws, our design guidelines for blade signs, or is it adequate?
We could take that off the prohibited, yeah.
The, the short answer is yes, the design guidelines does need to be updated, I have been working with Tim to, it's on his list of things to be.
That's good news.
Reramped, retooled.
Okay.
Updated.
And one other question, what about the, the size of your committee is three members?
Correct.
How does that work? Do you, do you, do you think it might make sense to add any members to this committee, or, or does it?
I don't know, it, it seems to work.
We have a pretty lively discussion, you know.
It seems to work fine with three, it, we could get more, sometimes it's, it just seems harder to get people together when you have bigger committees, but that doesn't mean we couldn't add, if the people had some expertise in signage, I think that'd be great, because the other member that couldn't make it here tonight, Ray, is a, he designed some build signs, so his knowledge is, is fantastic to have on the committee. He'll review how a sign is built, and the materials they use, and sometimes save the, whoever's coming in, he saves them a lot of money by suggesting a different, just a different way of building it, not even changing the design, just a, a different material, and it's gonna save them money and last long at the same time. So, he's, he's excellent on the committee. He's fantastic to have, so yeah, there, there are people that, you know, some maybe, some maybe with graphic design talents or something like that, I think it'd be fantastic to have.
Are you simply whoever's responsible for the petition? I suppose could add something, I don't know.
One other thing, Katie, is we may want to tighten up the language on the dawn versus dusk, you know, dawn and dusk, when you turn lights off and when they come back on again. You know, because dusk is at four o'clock in the evening sometimes, and it's at nine o'clock, you know, other times.
I thought it had, I think what we had.
Didn't the new zoning bylaw address that? I thought it did, comes to the lighting.
Yeah, it did, and then I think, but I think that it was unclear on the Ketch's Law Group sign, what their actual request was, so Bill, I don't know if you have any more information on that.
No, Ketch's was a, that's, that's actually where it came up, that I believe the new bylaw does have a time in it. Ketch's expected to be able to keep their sign on all the time, and we actually gave them a time to shut off, one o'clock?
I think you said eleven, but.
Might even be midnight.
But weren't, weren't you going to go back to them and ask if, or just to see if that worked for them, and if there were any issues there?
They, they wanted it to be longer, I asked them to leave it where it is, and we'll work and see if that works. Sign is up, let's find out, but I'll go back and revisit it with them.
What we had suggested, what we had suggested in the guidelines is that lighting should be turned off when the business is not open. You know, you're open, you turn your light, your sign on, if you're closed, you turn it off.
Get some grandfather signs, sleepy's.
I think we've had several that have come back and said something different. I think we have Blue Hill Bank on the back of the building is 11 o'clock, that's kind of what led us into Ketch's, that, I'm sorry, I forget what time Ketch's supposed to be off, but.
Eleven, yeah.
Based on that, is it 11? All right, then we said 11 at Ketch's, and it was because of that one. There is some signage on the back of Blue Hill Bank that stays on all the time, but it's more at the kiosk, and it's there more for public safety than it is for.
Right, at the ATM, right.
Lighting it up, I mean, you've got people going to an ATM, you don't want them in the dark.
Darkness, no, absolutely not.
So.
And so, Bill, you're generally at the sign review meetings, right?
Yes.
Usually when there's a decision that comes to us, we're getting a memo from Bill about what happened at your meetings, so.
Correct.
Yes.
And now we have Tim to help cover some of these meetings, that's good news. I think one thing we would like the sign review committee to probably weigh in and give us some advice on is this citizen's petition, because while it's a citizen's petition, I'm sure the warrant committee, or at least town meeting, will want to hear what the selectmen, probably the planning board, have to, you know, what our view on this citizen, citizen petition article might be, so, you know, now that you have a copy of it, maybe you could take a look at it, and over the next few weeks, give us any thoughts you may have on it.
Is there someone that's in charge of it, of it, that we could invite to one of our meetings, because like I said, I'm, I'm confused by it, because it says a moratorium on LED light, now if it was a moratorium on lit signs, that would make more sense to me, except like I said, not a moratorium on the bulb itself.
Yeah, we, we, usually it's the first person who signed the citizen petition, but we can help arrange that, reach out, see if they'd be willing to come in.
Yeah, because they could come in and kind of maybe explain a little more what they're.
Usually the warrant committee will invite the citizen group to come in and meet with them, but it may be helpful if they, if the citizen group has an opportunity at least to come in and talk with you if they'd like to.
Yeah.
But I think that's something that we could use some.
Yeah.
Some thoughts on, from you.
Have you guys met with the, the author?
No, these, these just came in, so, not, not yet. Anybody, any other comments or questions, or anything, John, or Larry, or Bill, from you on the sign review process, or anything that we can do to help make the process better?
No, I, I think the process works well, I think it, it works the best when people submit everything and don't try to cut corners, you know, but that's, that's the nature of the beast, everyone tries, I don't need to submit that, so, so they try to submit half the information, and then try to get approval on it, or they don't want to meet, they want us to approve it by email, and it's like, boy, we can't, we gotta meet in public, where, you know, we gotta do these things in public, we can't just answer emails and say, yeah, go ahead, we gotta meet, discuss it, review it, and do the, do it in the proper method, and some people just want, oh, I gave it to you, you know, can you just answer yes or no? So, other than that, you know, those are the normal bumps that you have when you ask people to submit information for review, you know, planning board, happens to the planning board, happens to zoning board, they, you know, they don't get all the information.
Right.
That they ask for, so things get, so then people get upset with us that they have to come back again, but.
But we know you get a lot of requests.
So, the people that show up with a really well-organized submission with all the information, it typically goes one meeting and we're done, unless we ask them to redesign something and then bring it back.
All right, well, thank you very much for being here tonight, and for all your work on this committee, we know you get a lot of sign requests, so.
Interesting committee.
Thanks for your willingness to serve on this.
Thank you very much.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay.
Okay, we're on to the next item on our agenda, which is a discussion with Colleen Corona, who's the chair, or the former chair of the Eastern Board of Selectmen.
Are you former now, really?
Former chair.
Former chair.
Still on the board, thank you.
Well, well, well-known member of the Mass Municipal Association, and the Selectmen's Associations, and all of these groups, we also have Leroy Walker, who's a member of our Town Government Study Committee, and Leroy, if you'd like to join us at the table, feel free, I know we may have one or two other members of the Town Government Study Committee, who are coming in tonight as well, to talk about the Town Administrator Article, and Dennis invited Colleen to come in, and we appreciate you being here, Colleen.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here, I'm here, Dennis asked me to come here to talk a little bit about the Strong Town Administrator in Eastern, we have a Strong Town Administrator, and what the differences are, and of course, these are just my opinions, as a member of the Mass Selectmen's Association, the Mass Municipal Association, you get the opportunity to network with selectmen from across the state, and hear about the different town manager, town administrator styles, and so I've heard from a lot of people about what works in what community, and I'm speaking about what works in our community, and I very strongly support the strong town administrator, town manager, style of governing for several reasons. The first reason that I feel that in this day and age, in a community this size, I believe you have about $100 million budget.
Yes.
Essentially, the Board of Selectmen is the Board of Directors of the community, it's a huge organization, a business, picture a business of $100 million, and acting as the Board of Directors, I really think that when a business gets this big, you really need to have a COO who's in charge of the day-to-day operations, and the Board of Selectmen is the policymaking body, and in charge of the COO, but really, it's a, it should be run like a business in that regard, there are many ways in which a town can't be run like a business, but in that regard, I think that the Board of Selectmen is the COO, and in order to have efficiency, and in hiring, efficiency in governing, to make the town administrator the COO with all the powers that entails, I think in this day and age, makes for a more efficient professional government. Second, and I think the most important thing right now, is that it has an impact on hiring, I don't feel, I personally don't feel that selectmen are the group who should be charged with hiring, I don't know exactly how things work in Milton, I can only speak for our community, I think that selectmen don't have an intimate knowledge of the day-to-day operations of every department in town, we know a lot, but we don't know everything, and we, many of us don't have experience with interviewing and hiring and human resources, some of us do, but a lot of us don't, and the cast of characters on the Board of Selectmen constantly changes, and we have multiple alliances, we have, we're dependent on voters for our position, and the pressure during hiring can be tremendous, in Eastern, the town administrator, the Board of Selectmen hires only the town accountant, and the veterans agent, due to certain state law, requirements of state law, and during that hiring process, it's a, the stress is so much different from what we usually deal with, because we have a strong town administrator. With a town administrator hard, charged with hiring, I think that the process is more consistent and professional, and the majority of politics is removed. There are, the other thing that this impacts, I really feel strongly about, is the hiring of the town administrator, I think you were at the meeting with the Mass Selectmen's Association meeting, where there was a session on hiring a town administrator. You were there as well, and the, the consultants spoke about the current hiring climate for town administrators, and how difficult that hiring climate is right now, you have an aging population of town administrators, a limited pool of town administrators, because people are leaving that field, you also have rising salary pressure, and as a community, you want to be in the best position to get the best town administrator, and if you're in a situation where you have a weak town administrator, I think candidates are gonna look at that, and know that they're gonna be managed differently, and not have the authority that they would have in a strong town administrator position, and that's something I think about as a community, you have to look into the future, and think about when you next hire a town administrator, and what kind of candidates you want to draw to that position. Also, when you're hiring, when you're hiring other candidates, I don't, like I said, I don't know exactly how it works here, but I think that when a town administrator does the hiring, they have the opportunity to interview those candidates in private, the, the candidates' applications aren't really open to the public under that process, they choose the candidate that they feel is best, it doesn't, there's not a list of finalists that goes to the Board of Selectmen, some candidates for positions don't like their name to become public in that finalist process, and don't feel inclined to apply for those positions. In Eastern, we have safeguards in place, in our town charter, we have a two-week right of refusal, I've been on the board for 12 years, we've never exercised that right of refusal in that time, and never questioned the hiring of our town, that our town administrator has made during that time, I really feel that having the town administrator do the hiring removes the pressure from the Board of Selectmen, allows that person to make the best, most professional choice, and move the community forward, and in this day and age, when selectmen really have multiple commitments and jobs outside of the job of selectmen, to have someone who's in charge of that hiring, makes it more consistent, efficient, and takes the politics out of the process. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Col, I guess.
And we should just note, your Strong Town Administrator is David Colton, who was our former town administrator.
Yes, I also would like to note that we share many things in common, we've had our signed by law before town meeting three times in the last three years to make changes to it, we had a long discussion about what dusk and dawn was at our last town meeting, and we share our senator, the lovely Senator Brian Joyce.
That's right, yes.
So, first question I have, Colleen, is the, the actual name, town administrator, town manager, and, and really, there's no practical difference, you can make a, a town administrator's role the same as a town manager's role, but in terms of attracting people to the job, do you think it makes a difference in what you call it?
In our charter, it's town administrator, if I could change that right now, I would change it to town manager, because I think it makes it clearer to the people who are looking at the job, exactly what the job entails, you know, with it being a town administrator, we have to explain in our advertising.
It really is a town manager.
That it's a strong town manager, a strong town administrator, which is essentially a town manager.
And are there any powers that the selectmen retained when you went to the strong, or, or did you pretty much, other than policymaking, give everything to the?
Over the 12 years, when I came on, it was a Strong Town Administrator.
Okay.
Over the last 12 years, we've actually delegated more authority to the town administrator, there were some procedural issues that we dealt with on the Board of Selectmen, one was the temporary sign approvals, the road race approvals, and we relinquished those to the town administrator, so that we wouldn't have to deal with them, they take up time at a meeting, and they're essentially perfunctory unless there's some big issue, so we delegated those things to the town administrator, our charter, you know, as yours, your proposal does, allows certain items to be delegated by the Board of Selectmen to the town administrator.
Colleen, when, how do you protect a town, we'll say, if your Strong Town Administrator doesn't make a good hire, like for example, if, you know, we, we make Amory the, the Strong Town Administrator next year, and all of a sudden, she doesn't renew the contract of some department head, and we don't agree with it, yet we don't have any authority to overrule her, or do we? Can we retain that?
I think that, I don't really feel that you need that power, I feel that you have the power to hire and fire the town administrator, and the town administrator is going to have that in their head, that they're gonna, that, that they want to make those decisions that are going to make their Board of Selectmen happy, not every, the minutia of the details, but they're gonna want to make the decision that keeps the, the people, the people who hire them and fire them happy, so that's certainly gonna be in the back of their head, it's going to be a consideration. I really think it's important for the town administrator to have the authority, though, to make those decisions, and if the town administrator did let someone go, I would assume that that person had made that decision because it was the right decision to make, and that they would explain why they made that decision. The people who have left Eastern, I've, you know, there has been a reason why they, they've left Eastern, and I have no regrets about the fact that I'm not in charge of that.
A couple of things, Colleen, how does the communication flow between, you have a five-member Board of Selectmen, is that correct, in Eastern, how does the communication flow between the Strong Town Administrator and the, this Board of Selectmen, other, I guess because you have a five-member board, it's probably a little bit different than the way we are now, but what's, what are your practices in that area?
With regard to what, in particular?
Well, I know Dennis, at one point, had said that most of the communication is between the chair of the Selectmen and the town administrator, and that the chair then reaches out to the other members of the board to inform them of what's going on.
Yes.
Are there often discussions between the town administrator and the other selectmen on?
That hasn't been the practice in our town, there isn't much that comes up between meetings that, that needs to be discussed, because he's a strong town administrator, so we don't discuss the small, I don't know what you discuss here, but we don't.
Well, because we're not in the strong form right now, it's, it's a different situation for us, so, you know, we are involved in the, in the day-to-day operations to a much greater extent than if we had the stronger powers being given to the town administrator, so that, that probably alone is a big difference.
I think it is, I, I remember when our current town administrator started, about six months after he started, we had to, the police chief retired, and he called me, I was the chair at the time, and said, you know, I'm gonna be beginning the process to hire a new police chief, you know, I'd like to know what your opinion is on this issue, and I said, I have absolutely no opinion, I, and neither will any other member of the board, no one will contact you about this, and he said, great, and the members of the community really don't contact us, because we, they know we're not charged with hiring, it really takes so much pressure off the Board of Selectmen, who has so many other things to do, and really takes the politics out of it, you know the pressure you face when you're hiring, and, and it's a member of the community, or someone you know, those pressures are gone in Eastern, we don't have them. Our town administrator, I feel, is free to make the choice that he thinks is best for the community, and because people don't know who the candidates are, of course, those documents are available after, after the hiring, but I think the process is cleaner, and it allows the town administrator to make the most professional choice.
And how are budgets handled? Because that's another area where, you know, I'll, I'll tell you about our practices, all our, well, the selectmen, the departments that report to us, we take a preliminary look at their budgets, but it's really the warrant, our finance committee, or our warrant committee, that gets all of the budgets, and then starts putting the budget together for the town, and Tom in particular, but I think a lot of people would like the process to move more to the town administrator, so that the town management is playing a stronger role at the beginning of the process in preparing a draft budget, or a budget to present to the finance committee, but yet, we have a lot of independent boards, for the park department, for the cemetery trustees, for the library, obviously, the schools are a different category, because that, that has to be separate, but how, how is the budget handled in Eastern, do, do you have the town administrator more involved right up front in presenting a budget?
The town administrator is charged with preparing the entire budget.
Including the schools?
Uh, no.
Schools prepare their own?
The school prepares, I think that that's a matter of state law, so.
Right, and, and submits it independently to the finance committee?
Right, our finance committee is advisory only, so they don't, the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator present the budget at town meeting, in addition to that, the town administrator prepares the budget, but we do have something called a budget subcommittee, which has been incredibly helpful in Eastern, it's a committee made up of two members of the Board of Selectmen, two members of the finance committee, two members of the school committee, the superintendent, the town administrator, the town accountant, and the business manager on the school side, and we start meeting in September, and meet every three or four weeks throughout the budget season, to come to an agreement about revenue projections, and to go over the revenue from the previous year, you know, it's a way to keep communication open between the school committee and the Board of Selectmen, and the town administrator and the superintendent, it's very effective, because by the time we get to town meeting, you know, an agreement has been reached, and there's, it, it works very well, but the town administrator prepares the budget with the department heads, the Board of Selectmen review that budget, and, and, but we don't play a part in, in creating it.
Yeah, that's exactly.
And I love that, too. I think as we move into the future, selectmen more and more have, you know, when I first joined the Board of Selectmen in Eastern, it was small local businessmen and women from the community, who had the time to participate fully in town government, and now we have people who work in Boston, who work full-time, who have young children, and they don't have the time, and so this works, because we concentrate on the things that we need to concentrate on, and, and the person we pay very well to do the job. on, and the person we pay very well to do the job does everything else in running town government.
I suppose it gives more of a continuity, too, in terms of the, the management style and everything else.
Well, the management style and the hiring style. Now, our town administrator, when he does hire someone, frequently asks for people who are important to sit in on those interviews. Now, he's asked me to sit in on interviews for a position, but I know when I go into those interviews that I have no vote, and I only have an opinion. And he ultimately makes the decision. But he does use people that are, he feels are important to the process. He'll call people, you know, he'll say, "Can you sit on this set of interviews?" Then he'll ask someone else, "Can you sit in on this set of interviews?" So, he seeks out opinions, but ultimately, he's the authority that does the hiring.
Colleen, could you say again what the membership is on the budget subcommittee?
Two members of the school committee, two members of the Board of Selectmen, two members of the finance committee, the superintendent, the town administrator, the town accountant, and the school business, like, the school accountant. I don't know what you call them here.
That would probably cost a public meeting, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Great.
Do you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay.
That's entirely consistent with, as we've been working on this issue for a couple of years. And what you've said is entirely consistent with what we found in our research. And we think this is absolutely the right way to go.
I really think, as I said, my closing sentence would be, you know, everything may work now, but you really have to think about, the town has to think about the future, and who's coming next, and, and, and what's happening in the community next as the community and the budget grow. So.
Colleen, does Easton have a personnel board?
Yes. With limited responsibilities.
I guess that's the key, because we have a draft that we're working on with the Town Government Study Committee to come up with a recommendation for the duties of the town administrator that we're going to put before town meeting. And one of the issues was, we want, we, we used some different Brookline and Dedham, some different models for it, and we took some language that was Dedham's model that had the town administrator responsible for a personnel system. And we've been, you know, as we're refining this draft, we're realizing we need to recognize we have a personnel board that performs some of those duties. So, we'd want the town administrator to be working in conjunction with the personnel board. But is it, how limited is it, is your board in Easton? What do they do?
They are charged with doing a salary survey, you know, a, I'd have to review the charge, but, to make, charged with making a salary schedule, you know, for non-union employees in the town. So, that is very limiting because there are, I think there are only 13 non-union employees and, yeah, so it's a, it's a, not a, it's not a broad scope.
So, if an employee, if the town administrator in Easton is bringing a new employee on board, is personnel board approval of the appointment required?
Not, not at all.
Okay. That's a difference.
No, that's, no. The only person who makes those decisions, the only people who have any input at all is the Board of Selectmen, who has a 14-day right of refusal.
And something very similar is what we have in our current draft, still working on.
Which we've never exercised, as I said.
It would seem that that would be pretty rarely invoked, anyway.
Colleen, in terms of the policy kinds of decisions, you know, being obviously a board that kind of deals right now with the day-to-day decisions more, then there's hardly time. I mean, you fit it in someplace, but I'm not even sure you recognize them as policy decisions because they just kind of get meshed in with everything else that you're doing. But what types of policy, you know, can you give me some examples of some of the policy decisions that you discuss?
At our?
At meetings?
At our meetings?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we, now you're going to stump me because I'm thinking back at our, you know, your meetings are filled with common vixxular licenses and one-day liquor licenses and things like that. You know, we're putting together now a committee charge for a committee that's going to be viewing, reviewing all the water bodies in town because we have, as an industrial community, as a community that was factory-based, we have a lot of pollution that hasn't been cleaned up yet. So, we have a committee that's forming around that issue. So, right now, we're making the committee charge for that so that that committee can move forward. That would be a policy decision. What we've tried to remove from our schedule are things that are, simple things that, that someone who's well-paid, unlike us, can make, and they can take them off our plate, you know?
Yeah. So, negotiating contracts, even vendor contracts is typically done by?
Yes. The Board of Selectmen doesn't sit in on any of the union negotiations. It's the town council and labor council. I don't know what the, and I'm very happy to be in that position. I'm happy, I love the job of selectman, but I want to relegate the duties of the town administrator to the town administrator.
So, if, when, if and when we have a strong town administrator, for example, we hire the police right now on the recommendation of our chief, who would hire the police in a, in a strong town administrator role?
The town administrator with the police chief.
Again, on a recommendation of the police chief, but, so there wouldn't be any public interviews, or?
No. And actually, I think that that's detrimental. I mean, when you conduct public interviews, the questions and the answers are prescribed. You're not really having a frank discussion. You can't get into any depth at all that you can get into when you're sitting in a room having an interview with someone. It's a very stilted process in which, as members of the Board of Selectmen, frankly, we don't express our real opinion because we're afraid to. Because you can't have a discussion about how you like the things about this candidate and you don't like the things about this candidate that you can have, that a town administrator can have with the police chief. So, I think that that's a very difficult situation. It's televised, you're rejecting someone publicly. I think it's bad for the candidates. I think it's bad for the people who are doing the interviewing. I think that the system, that system is flawed and leads to a lot of unspoken things happening at the table, and sometimes the wrong decisions are made.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Plus, because of the civil service process, you really, I mean, your choice is pretty limited anyways.
Right. But I, so we eliminate the public process with a strong town administrator?
And I'm not saying that doing something in public is wrong. I don't want that to go out there because I think everything should be done in public that should be. But the town administrator, if they're the hire, has the right to do that pub process in private. It's not subject to the open meeting law. And I think as a candidate, if I know, so, for example, we just hired a veterans agent. We had a subcommittee screen the candidates. We presented three candidates to the Board of Selectmen. I was on that subcommittee. Those candidates were interviewed publicly. It was very hard to ask them questions. When they left the room, the Board of Selectmen couldn't have a frank discussion about what they liked and didn't like about the people. So, you sat there silently with your own opinion. It was, you don't want to be, you know, disrespectful to anyone who came before us. And then you publicly vote for one, and two are rejected publicly, who have jobs. And that wouldn't have happened if the town administrator was able to do the hiring. Under the law, under the law, our charter doesn't say anything about the veterans agents. State law requires the Board of Selectmen to do the hiring. So, it was a very uncomfortable situation for me, and frankly, I would have appreciated if the town administrator was doing the hiring.
Great point.
Anyone else? Any other comments or questions, Leroy? Anything?
No, I think this, I think this has been valuable. We, we had some ideas about how the position works, but I think you've articulated in very clear terms, particularly with the hiring, the benefit of, as you said, when you have a $100 million operation, it's critically important to hire the best talent. And I think, I do have a human resources background, and I think the, the process where you can ask very candid questions and get very candid answers is, is very important. And being able to hire the best people without, as you said, reducing both the public, the public nature of the process, but also, I, I think some of the politics, taking some of that out of it.
Public pressure.
Yeah. Is, is very important. So, thanks for doing this.
Yeah, this has been very helpful, Colleen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming up here.
It's a pleasure.
Coming up here.
Thank you so much.
You know how busy you are. And please give our best to David Colton.
And we'll see you on Friday, anyway.
We'll see you at the MMA on Friday, that's right. Thank you, Leroy, too. Okay, we're on to the South Shore Home Consortium, and Bill Clark is going to rejoin us for that discussion.
I sent you a packet of information on this one. There are, I think all you have, you must have the memo that I gave you?
Yes.
Basically, it's a, we're part of the home program. Home program represents, it's Quincy, Braintree, Waymouth, Holbrook, and Milton. Yearly, we get anywhere from $50,000 to $75,000 that it's to be used to increase affordable housing. One of the methods that you can use is home rehabilitation, if we participate in that program. The social home program uses Neighborhood Works, which is based in Quincy, and they do all the paperwork. There is a series of contracts that we have to have with Neighborhood Works and the city of Quincy, since they are our administrator. They take care of all the paperwork for us. On the individual homes, for the rehabilitation program, Mass, the company in Quincy will take care of doing all of the paperwork for it. They'll interview the people, they'll check their, their financials, they'll go back and look at the house, they'll make sure what needs to be done in the house. There is a drawback to the rehabilitation program, and that is that although you may want to give an individual the roof, the program is you have to bring the entire house up to code. If there's a problem with how we're doing it, it's, we're starting with $50,000, and we can go back and change and make it more if we have to, because we have more money in our virtual bank with this program. It's a good number to start with. It's a good number to have the, to have social work on interviewing people that we can actually get to stay in their homes. All of the other members have used this. Right now, Braintree is the only one not using it. Part of the reason for Braintree not to use it is they are going in a different direction. Some of the others actually are community block grant communities. Therefore, they have other funds that they can, yeah, CDBG, that they can actually take and meld in with this. All we have is the potential to use Get the Let Out Program, which is another federal program to help people stay in their homes, to address some of the issues that your home may have. All I'm asking for is for the board to take a vote to participate in the rehab program, sign the contracts, so that we can sit down, develop a contract that we can then work with people who can meet the standards of the program.
Yeah, this is one of the things going forward that, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust could take on, because as Bill said, that because it's federal money, it's HUD money that's coming in, it comes with strings attached. And one of the, one, like you said, is bringing, bringing the entire house up to code, which may exceed, the cost may exceed the amount of a loan that's available if the house is in bad enough condition. But the Affordable Housing Trust could, could model a program very similar to that without necessarily having those restrictions. So, you could use home money when the house was basically up to code and just needed a loan. You could use non-home money out of the Affordable Housing Trust when, you know, you wanted to do a specific thing. There were other code violations, but, you know, they just, you know, they weren't life-threatening necessarily, because a lot of these aren't life-threatening code violations. They're just, they're just building codes.
I've had several people express interest in it. I've actually talked to Diane Ferrari about, you know, how we might be able to coordinate and use some of this money on some of her projects. We have talked about it. I've had, I've looked at a couple of the homes that she has brought forward. Again, this is a loan. This isn't a grant to these people. This is a loan. This goes against their property. The money is paid back. The issues on the payback can be either no interest or very low interest. The idea is to get them to be able to stay in their existing house.
And it's only available if you're 80% of the loan, area median?
Yep. There is, there's very strict guidelines to it. If the property is sold, we get the money back all at once, and we get to reuse the money. And if there's a good part to it, second time through, it's not as hard to use the same money. First time, you're dealing with all of the HUD requirements. Second time, it's money that's in that particular pot for you.
Bill, can this be used on, we'll say, for landlords that have low-income tenants? Could it, could it be used on their house to bring the house up to code?
Oh.
To bring the apartment up to code?
There actually is a program within Neighborhood Works that, that, there is a program within there to, to work with landlords. So, I don't know the direct answer to your question, but I sure do know who to ask the question.
For example, I have, I had a Section 8 tenant in South Austin, and they applied for, the house was not insulated, but they applied for insulation, and I had the house insulated for free because of this one tenant.
Lucky.
No, I'm saying.
I, I understand, and I do believe it's the same thing.
So, if you have low-income tenants, can they get something similar done for the landlord?
Yep.
Just to stay in the place? You know? One other question, Bill. How much did we receive last year from this program, and how much was given out? Was all $50,000?
Last year, we received 60, 62, 63, and we haven't given any of it away yet. The last time we spent money from this was on the working home.
On walk-up?
Yes.
So, so do we get to retain that 60?
Yes.
Plus 50?
We have 130, 136,000 in our.
Okay. So, it's not a case of if you don't, if you don't spend it, you lose it. You can save it.
Eventually, it is one of those, if you don't use it, you lose it. But right now, that's why we're trying to get into this program. We want to spend it. We don't want to hold it. You can't, you can't hold it forever. It's either use it or lose it, and we're getting to the point that.
Right. And what we have is too, too small to acquire. We don't have enough to acquire properties and things like that, which you could also do under the program.
Yes.
So, what kind of, I understand the income guidelines, it's 80.